Committee of the whole for June twelfth, twenty twenty-three. Um, I just lost my agenda here. So just a second, bear with me and we'll restart with the land acknowledgement. So in June twelfth, twenty twenty-three, we acknowledged that this land on which Smith Falls is now located has been the site of human activity for over ten thousand years and it's rich in indigenous history. This land is the ancestral and unceded territory of the Alconquin Nation, Abby Nation. We're grateful to the Alconquin ancestors who cared for the land and water in order that we might meet here today. We're also grateful to the Alconquin people for their contribution in the making of the Rita Canal, which runs through Smith Falls. We're mindful of broken covenants and the need to reconcile with our relations. Together, may we care for this land and each other, drawing on the strength of our mutual history of nation building through peace and friendship, being mindful of generations to come. Uh, with that, we will take amendments to the agenda, any amendments to the agenda tonight? Uh, seeing none, uh, disclosure or monetary interest. Not seeing any disclosure monetary interest. Uh, we've got a delegation tonight from University Hospitals Kingston Foundation, so I will pass, uh, pass it over to, um, Abby, I believe, where you're a presenter.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I'll just, uh, share my screen here. That looks okay. Everyone can see my screen.
Not yet, no.
No, oh. Don't know. Let's try one more time. There we go.
Great.
Okay. Well, thank you for the introduction and including me in your meeting today. Um, I appreciate the opportunity to share some updates with you regarding Kingston's hospitals. You know, as demand for healthcare services continues to increase in our region, the role of University Hospitals Kingston Foundation is more important than ever. Our goal to connect passionate individuals and groups with a cause or need at one of the hospital sites ensures that they can continue to offer the most advanced life-saving care to residents throughout our region. I'm going to share some numbers on how Smith Falls residents are currently using these hospitals. I will provide an update on the priorities and the redevelopment plans for Kingston Health Sciences Centre and hopefully inspire you to start considering how your council can be a part of this important work. U H K F currently supports K H S C through a number of their sites, which includes K G H for acute care, Hotel Due for ambulatory services and same-day surgeries, and also the newly opened Breast Imaging Kingston Centre on Highway fifteen. U H K F also supports Providence Care, which includes the Hospital for Rehab, Palliative Care, Geriatrics, and Mental Health Services, the Long-Term Care Home, The Manor, and a new ten-bed hospice. Both the hospice facility and the new Manor project will break ground in the next few months. Together, K H S C and Providence Care serve the healthcare needs for the entire southeastern Ontario region, ranging from birth to death. The relationship with Queen's University allows both hospital to operate as academic teaching facilities, and for that, patients are incredibly fortunate because it draws specialists to these hospitals that most communities of our size would not typically be considered for. I feel that the current environment is pulling the wool from our eyes on how the government does not fund all health, hospital healthcare needs. We know most hospitals across Canada are overstretched in resources and personnel. K H S C is no different, and some days they need to decide whether they are using their budget to acquire a new piece of surgical equipment or repair critical infrastructure to reduce the number of floods they deal with. This is a true story, and flooding is unfortunately a frequent issue for the Hotel Due Hospital site. When it comes to large-scale redevelopment projects such as the one we are working towards at K G H, the government pays ninety percent of those construction costs, but none of the ancillary spaces such as parking or cafeteria, and none of the equipment or furnishings. So that balance must be drawn from hospital revenue and philanthropy, and that is what is referred to as the local share. With the increasing cost of innovative medical technology and equipment, philanthropic support is more important than ever for hospitals today, especially since the local share for K H S C is forecasted at over four hundred million over the next ten years, and this number does not include the amount required for redevelopment of the K G H site. With respect to the previous plan to redevelop the K G H site with a twelve-story tower, this is currently being reviewed with the Ministry of Health and is likely going to change course. Whether it's a new site, one that may see critical care and ambulatory services brought under one roof, we know that the potential opens up for expanded services and even greater healthcare outcomes for our patients. As K H S C continues to invest in technology and innovation, they will be positioned to draw from top specialists in Canada, which will help to expand the types of procedures that are available, allowing patients to stay local and saving them from the inconvenience of traveling to larger city centers. Your residents appreciate the care they receive at K H S C, and they've responded in generosity with their own giving, almost fifty thousand over the last six years. We are also very fortunate to have the support from nearly every municipality and county in southeastern Ontario. While healthcare is not technically a budget item for municipal councils, we know that a strong healthcare system is a major factor in attracting new residents to our towns and cities, and also a key contributor to equality of life. A few slides back, I referred to some rather significant funding needs at K H S C, and this is because the acute care they provide extends to the entire southeastern Ontario region, serving patients far beyond Kingston's borders, as shown in the data here. Broken out by Public Health Unit, Lanark Leeds, and Granville accounts for over seventy-eight thousand visits each year. When we consider how residents of Smith Falls are using the hospitals in Kingston, our data shows that two thousand individuals received care last year, which translates to about or almost a quarter of all residents accessing the services at K H S C. The frequency of hospital visits jumps considerably to over four thousand annual visits from Smith Falls in total. It's important to note, the number one reason your residents come to K H S C is to access the specialized services throughout patient clinics. It's clear that Perth and Smith Falls District Hospital is doing an excellent job of managing patients' routine and some emergency healthcare needs. But when those needs become acute or highly specialized, Kingston Health Sciences Centre is there to provide the critical care for complex cases of your residents. We understand that residents access hospitals in the Ottawa area as well as Kingston. Your citizens are very fortunate to have access to multiple academic and tertiary care hospitals. While I'm not here to ask for an investment this year, I hope to return in the future to request your support. Our request will be based on a fair share that accounts for usage of the hospital, as shown here today. This fair share approach ensures our appeal to municipalities is fair and represents hospital usage. It's consistently used when seeking support for the hospital and has been well received. I shared earlier, the planning for K G H redevelopment is expected to change course as we await further feedback from the Ministry of Health. The hospital must continue to innovate and build capacity for the care happening inside its existing walls. The capital upgrades and renewals for research, equipment, and specialized services are the first steps in advancing care and will attract the best and brightest specialists that are needed for this type of innovative healthcare. At some point, every citizen in our region will require the assistance of Kingston's hospital for themselves or a loved one. And when that time comes, they'll count on being able to access services in a well-equipped and patient-centered environment. There are a number of projects on the horizon that will bring this innovation to Kingston Health Sciences Centre. The first one is the significant equipment upgrades happening in the operating rooms. The surgical team performs more than twenty-two thousand procedures each year. If you've ever participated in our hospital tours, you will recall that some of these spaces are some of the oldest operating rooms in the country. The trend towards minimally invasive surgical procedures allows for safer outcomes, shorter hospital stays, and time off work for patients, but this requires highly specialized equipment. Today, they require an investment of eight million dollars over the next two years to bring them to current patient care standards. The equipment will benefit a wide variety of departments from bariatrics to oncology, urology, cardiology, E N T, pediatrics, obstetrics, and gynecology, and it can all be moved to a new site when ready. Another priority is the clinical labs, where they're working to expand their translational genomics facility. This highly specialized lab was born from the pandemic when K H S C was selected as one of four labs in Ontario to monitor variants of concern. Fast forward to today, where the labs are taking the next step in precision medicine, also referred to as personalized medicine, and through genetic sequencing are making the diagnosis of cancer and other diseases more accurate by evaluating specific tumor biomarkers to select the safest and most effective treatments. We need to increase funding by two-point-five million to acquire the necessary equipment to expand the translational genomics lab. This will lead to improved detection, diagnosis, treatment, and outcomes for our communities. In a recent announcement from Ontario Health, K H S C was approved as the fourteenth site in Ontario to operate a PET scanner. This is very positive news for citizens of our region who will no longer have to travel to major city centers for these scans. A PET scan will scan patients more comprehensively than a C T or M R I when it comes to diagnosing cancer in some cardiovascular and neurological diseases. In cancer patients, PET scanners allow specialists to determine the stage of cancer in a patient and whether the cancer has spread or returned. The PET scan is an early essential step before treatment of most cancers. Moreover, PET scanners must be repeated at intervals during therapy. Having access to advanced imaging at K H S C will save the residents time, money, and worry, and will also lead to better and earlier diagnoses and treatment of cancer and cardiac conditions. As we are seeing across other hospital sites such as Perth and Smith Falls District Hospital, as well as Brockville General, the province is prioritizing MRIs for hospitals at all levels. This is fantastic news as patients will not have to wait as long for these scans. K G H currently has two MRIs and are very excited to bring a third to our Breast Imaging Kingston Centre. Adding an MRI to the state-of-the-art facility will help to enhance operations with same-day or rapid turnaround from scan to diagnosis. K H S C is also the only MRI service approved for high-risk breast MRI in the region, and also MRI-guided breast biopsy. These couple upgrades reflect a small but critical portion of the four hundred million required over the next ten years, for which there's no government funding. It will be sourced through a combination of the hospital's operational budget and community philanthropy, and this is where U H K F fundraising efforts are focused for the next twenty-four months. I'm not here to ask for an investment today, however, I'd like to highlight the direct benefits to residents of your city. In general terms, there'll be more advanced procedures offered close to home. Through improved operating room equipment, residents will have better surgical outcomes with more minimally invasive options. The translational genomics lab will lead to better cancer treatment and outcomes for the entire region. The addition of a PET scanner will bring reduced weight and travel times for imaging that is required during cancer and cardiac diagnosis and treatments. But perhaps most noteworthy is that, as an academic teaching facility, one of only five in Ontario, we're fortunate to have some of the best specialists in the world practicing here. But if we don't have the facilities or equipment to accommodate their cutting-edge procedures, we could be overlooked. Finally, the acute care accessible to Smith Falls will help attract individuals and businesses to the region, which we know is once again seeing notable growth in population. I want to thank you for having me today. When I have more information on the direction for the redevelopment of the K G H site, I would like to return and share that with council. Hopefully, the information shared today has shown value that K H S C brings to residents of Smith Falls as the regional trauma centre for southeastern Ontario. If there is any questions, I'd be happy to answer those now.
Thank you for your presentation. We've got councillor McKenna first, and then councillor Robinson.
Sure.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thanks, Abby, for the presentation. Uh, the last time, uh, the foundation came was pre-pandemic, I think, or maybe just at the start and and that, uh, figure of two thousand residents came up then, and I did ask a question because that's one in four of our residents, which struck me as very, very high, considering we are split, uh, with a lot of our residents going into Ottawa. And so I did ask for those numbers to be double-checked, and I never heard back. Uh, and I'm, and I know you don't make the numbers up, but I, uh, I don't doubt it, but it seems extremely high, one in four, uh, annually going down to Kingston for those services. So, unless you can give, give me a, a firm answer, would you mind looking into that for me?
You know, I run these numbers quite frequently. I run them every year, and I, I do run them for, um, you know, every municipality that I come before, and, and generally your response is similar to theirs. They're surprised by the numbers. Um, you know, I, I can share that, um, you know, other cities and towns, um, you know, for example, I think Quinny West and Belleville, on average, a third of their population is coming to Kingston, so it's a bit higher. Um, but again, they don't have another academic tertiary care hospital to go to, so that, that does explain that, but you know, they are, they are high numbers. Um, but I'm happy to chat with you in more detail about them. Um, but I, I do work quite closely with our, uh, our data management team to get those numbers updated every year.
Uh, thank you very much, Abby. Uh, Mr. Chair, I have one more, just a suggestion to my colleagues. Um, we, we do, uh, and not surprisingly, uh, provide taxpayer money to the Persnance Falls Hospital for their capital equipment. And as much as that pains us sometimes, uh, recognizing the problem, it doesn't pay all of it. Um, we're pleased to be able to do so. We get requests from Chio and the expanding Rogers House, the Ronald McDonald House in Ottawa. We're, we're donating, sorry, we're, uh, granting money to the Persnance Falls Hospital, and I know you're not requesting it today, but we're doing that without any policy framework. So this is more to my colleagues. Um, I, I wonder if, if you would agree that we could ask staff for the twenty, uh, twenty-twenty-four budget year, that we have some sort of a, a guide or a framework from staff to help these decisions, uh, because I, I know we are worried, we do have limited resources, and we want to contribute. These are our residents. Uh, these are vital services. Uh, but with it, without any policy guiding it, we're doing it out of, you know, almost in the moment, out of, uh, out of the goodness, you know, we're trying to be good councillors and make good decisions, but without any guidelines. Uh, I'm just wondering if we could ask staff for, for the next budget round, if we could have some framework that would help guide these kind of, um, in particular, capital requests from a variety of hospitals. I'll leave it at that and turn it back to you, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thanks, councillor McKenna. Councillor Robinson.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Um. Thanks very much, Abby, for your presentation. Like, I realize how important funding is, as the government doesn't provide everything that's required to run a hospital. And the thing that caught, caught me was I didn't realize how many, uh, residents from Smith Falls were actually using your facilities over the course of the year, like that, that, I found that extremely eye-opening for me. So, anyway, that's, that's my comment.
Yeah, like I said, your comments and your reaction to those numbers is pretty typical. Um, and yeah, it's, it's interesting to look at the numbers and specifically to see what they're coming for. Um, usually it's, it's not the E R, um, it's for something a little bit more specialized, so you know, ophthalmology, uh, endocrinology, cardiology, that type of thing, um, and, uh, certainly the cancer center as well, uh, but it does, you know, I think, paint a good picture of how your residents do, um, you know, require the services at Kingston Health Sciences Centre.
Thank you.
Mark Panko.
Yeah, thanks, Abby, and I, I think we all understand we have family, friends, even some people on the Zoom here today who have, who have used, uh, your hospital facilities and, and benefited from the care there. I, I do wonder with the numbers as well, and I, um, I'm a former chair of our hospital foundation, and I, I sit on the hospital board here, and I was involved with the development of, of a, of a request, a municipal campaign, uh, locally within our catchment area and, and designing that, and I think part of it, your, your challenge may be, if you're going by postal codes, there's a lot of people uh, in this area who have a Smith Falls address, um, but are in the rural township surrounding us. So that may inflate our number somewhat. There's still obviously people who would use our existing hospital and services in our community, but may may reside in Montague Township or Rita Lakes Township, and so if you go by postal code, you might be able to break that down into those that are just outside our borders. Um, and, and I'm proud, our, our council, um, two thousand and eighteen, I guess, started the ball rolling, but in two thousand and nineteen made our first contribution to our local hospital. And like, we've given a hundred and seventy-five thousand a year for the last five years, so let's, eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. We've contributed to healthcare in our community, recognizing, of course, that uh, provincial government does not provide any support towards equipment, and, uh, how vitally, vitally important that is, as you mentioned, uh, for our physicians or healthcare professionals to have the equipment they need to, to do the work to do. So, and, and with an MRI being installed here, there's going to be a capital campaign coming for that. So it, it's, we've got some, some challenges even locally when it comes to fundraising, but I think we all give a small piece of our heart in, in Kingston, recognizing what role that your hospital has played for our loved ones. So uh, we look forward to you coming back at some time in the future as, as redevelopment plan comes forward, but uh, again, I think it's a matter of us trying to evaluate, as, as councillor McKenna indicated, really, how should we be supporting some of these requests that come down the pipe on, on a regular basis? So I, I will add my support to councillor McKenna's comment that perhaps staff can work on a framework, and thank you for being here tonight, Abby.
Thank you, Mark Panko, and I'll just, um, make two comments there. You know, we, we, we really love hearing when councils are supporting other hospitals. Um, you know, we, we work very collaboratively with all the community hospitals throughout the region, and you know, a strong community hospital helps our hospital as well. Um, so please, you know, do support them. I know that they've got a big campaign coming up, um, and certainly that's why we're not here asking for a commitment right now. When we have more information about the redevelopment and, you know, some specifics there, I'll be back to share that. Um, and then one more comment on the numbers, just to kind of put them in perspective. Um, the total number of visits to Kingston Health Sciences Centre in one year is about seven hundred thousand, and three hundred and fifty thousand visits are from Kingstonians. So that's, you know, people who are going multiple times a year. Certainly not every Kingstonian walks through the doors. Um, but that's a lot of visits coming into the hospital, so maybe that helps, uh, frame those numbers a little bit better, but, uh, thank you very much for your time tonight. If, uh, there's no further questions, I'll, uh, say good evening.
All right. Thanks a lot, Abby. Not seeing any others. I definitely agree with councillor McKenna's recommendation that we come up with some kind of a policy. Um, and I would like to see those numbers run again, just to check if it's for the neighboring municipalities, because, uh, it seems high. I just, I worry that when we get to a point, um, that these, you know, if it can't be covered by philanthropy and, and the Kingston Hospital network has to go further out, Ottawa has to go further out, and we're trying to support our own community hospital. Uh, if philanthropy can't cover the difference anymore, it really represents a downloading of the provincial responsibility to the municipality, and we've got such a smaller tax base to work off of than the province does. So I, I've been really looking forward to you coming back, but I'm definitely, um, I don't know how cautious about, about making these kind of commitments. Uh, I don't see any other hands up. Uh, so with that, I think we will, uh, move on. Thank you very much for coming tonight, Abby.
Thanks, everyone. Good night.
Dean, yeah?
So, sorry to interrupt, Chair McGuire, just, I, I noted there was some mention of direction to staff there, so if that is council's directive, um, please add that as a priority issue, either tonight or in the future, to give firm direction to council, so that policy piece can be included for the twenty-twenty-four budget.
Are we, uh, do we have a consensus for, uh, including that? Direction to staff? Okay, I see for, uh, thank, good, thanks.
So just procedurally, if you don't mind adding that quickly as a priority issue later tonight, we'll just capture that as an action item to ensure that it's, it's followed up on, okay?
Okay, great. So that'll be eight-point-four.
Thank you, everybody.
Excellent. So that, uh, that brings us into adoption minutes. Uh, we've got a record, recommended motion. Uh, any movers, secounders? Moved by councillor Robinson, seconded by councillor Brennan at the minutes of the May twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three, June twenty, June fifth, twenty-twenty-three. Official plan meeting and the June fifth, twenty-twenty-three special committee, the whole meetings be received and filed. All those in favor? And that is carried. Do we have any C O directors reports tonight? Uh, director McMon?
Uh, yes, we do, Mr. Chair. Just one report from senior planner Granky this evening, and I see he's on the call.
Great, thank you.
Good, uh, good evening, uh, Mr. Chair. My apologies for stepping in a bit late. Uh, I was having some, some Zoom issues there, but I am in now, and I have a couple of brief, brief updates. So later this evening, I will present a report that provides an update on the community improvement plan spring intake, and depending on council's direction, we'll leave some funds available for a fall intake. The report indicates a remaining balance of just under twenty-six thousand dollars if council approves all applications as presented this evening. That includes, that amount includes sixteen thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven for Levin Church Street West, which is the Presbyterian Church. Council had approved a grant of that amount for the replacement of parts to the furnace. I'm advising council that the church withdraw their funding applications. They found a much cheaper way and parts to repair the furnace without needing to replace their boilers. That's excellent news for the church, and the funds that would be earmarked for that project would go back into reserve and available for, uh, in the fall for new applications. My second update's a brief, uh, update on the Brownfield Financial Tax Incentive Programme offered by the Government of Ontario, which was brought forward to council as a recent communication item. Our read on that program is that it can be used to stack up on top of our own Program Nine, which is the Brownfield Tax Increment Equivalent Rebate, although the province offers a, a different time period than the ten years we can offer. In that case, they, they can offer offering matching provincial education tax relief for up to six years for business development and up to ten years for residential development from the three years previously. The, uh, the town's community improvement plan does not prioritize applications that have access to, to funding other funding sources, and, uh, this does not appear to contradict or necessitate any amendments to our own C I P in order to, uh, to accommodate, uh, accommodate that. So this additional program can be helpful, and we're, uh, we're hopeful that it offers an additional incentive to someone who wishes to develop a contaminated property, as developments of these sites can be quite expensive. So for years, uh, where we activate Program Nine and through our promotional process, we can let potential applicants know that the extra support may be available. We don't get many Brownfield applications or inquiries, but when we do, every, uh, every bit helps. Uh, that, that concludes my update, Mr. Chair.
Great. Thanks, Senior Planner Granky. Any questions, comments, uh, tonight? Uh, not seeing any great news in the Brownfield, uh, stuff, though. We've got for our parcels in town, um. Sorry, is that, uh, that's our, I think your only report tonight, eh?
That's, that's correct, Mr. Chair.
Okay, great. All right. Thanks a lot, Carol, and we'll move on to our in-camera issues. Uh, we've got a motion to move in camera. At seven-point-one, do we have a mover, seconder? I've moved by councillor Brennan, seconded by councillor Miller, that council of the Corporation of the Tennis Smith Falls is provided in section two-three-nine-two-E of the municipal act as amended, move into a closed meeting at five-twenty-six P M to discuss the litigation matter. All those in favor? And that is carried, so we'll move in camera and return shortly. And that is carried. So we'll move in camera and return shortly.
Mr. Chair, we'll just get that screen brought down and then we'll be able to proceed with the rest of discussion in open session.
Great, thanks to you. Okay, so we're all back. Council Brennan?
Brennan must have his camera turned off.
Yeah, let's see him here.
Yeah, he must have stepped out. However, you do have a quorum to proceed with the next portion of the meeting.
Okay, great. So the Rising Report for seven point one is that council was updated and provided direction on a litigation matter and seven point two, the Rising Report is that council discussed the acquisition disposition of land and gave staff direction and will be adding item eight point five related to seven point two on tonight's agenda with senior planner Granky. With that, we'll move into eight point one with senior planner Granky, the Community Improvement Plan Spring intake update.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good evening committee. I'm bringing forward a report on behalf of Planning Clerk Mary Rimming. And this is an update on two applications under the town's new community improvement plan. As council will recall, on May twenty eighth, staff brought forward funding recommendations from the CIP Working Committee for nine applications under Programs thirteen and fourteen, which address facade improvements and building stock and building viability upgrades within their downtown core. Staff had deferred decisions on two of the applications, namely to Russell Street and twenty five Becca Street North, pending further discussions with the applicants and potential modification to the proposal. Since that time, staff have liaised with both applicants and updates are brought board for council's consideration and direction. With respect to twenty five Becca Street, the property containing the the Freshington Studio and adjacent to Boomtown, a variety of improvements are proposed to the exterior of the building, including architectural repairs and brick repainting, which would mirror what council approved previously for the adjacent property, which has the same owner. What was distinct about this proposal was the windows with was that there's windows are included and the app and the original application sought larger windows that filled more of the window lintels and which would be eligible for an additional rebate of five thousand dollars as a as an energy efficiency rebate. So the proposed windows would be larger than what is there now, but not fill the entire space. Council had asked staff to initiate conversation with the applicant to explore some design enhancements to accommodate visual interest in the window filler that's sympathetic to the architectural era of the building. Unfortunately, upon assessing upon assessing financial implications to modify the proposal, there were budget budgetary constraints with the additional work that made that overall portion of the project non-viable. As such, the applicant has asked to withdraw the windows portion of the application. The revision of the proposal would reduce the total cost of the improvements from thirty four thousand to about twenty two thousand and reduce the the funding from fifteen thousand initially requested to ten thousand dollars. The remainder of the application and improvements remain on the table and we see council's direction on 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 that remaining the the remaining facade improvements. For the second application to Russell Street, which includes the Vault Restaurant, there is an application for CIP funding to replace the door and railing. As directed by council, staff initiated conversation with the applicant to to determine a suitable door replacement complementary to the architecture of the building. In conversation, the applicant advised that the door is proposed as is in order to provide a consistent design between the entrance doors at the street and the and the other doors into the restaurant. Due to a malfunction with the door, the applicant has ordered those those new doors. As such, no modifications to the proposal were submitted and council has asked for direction on the on the on the request for funding as as originally presented. So the the original funding requests were were evaluated and recommendations were provided by by a working group. These applications were not brought back to the working group since there were no there were not substantial changes to what was to to the overall nature of of the proposal. However, the report does include a summary outlining outlining the working groups committee, working groups consideration. So at this point, staff are are seeking council's direction on on these two remaining CIP applications. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
That's great. Thank you very much, girl or senior planner Granky. I know the windows were the only contentious issue for the twenty five Becker Street North property. So with those removed, do we have thumbs up to approve that one? Uh, great. And for the two Russell Street East, there's no new information coming forward on that one. And the consensus at the last meeting was it not be funded? So I'm assuming that will stand and is there thumbs up to stick with the the consensus from the last meeting? Uh, Council Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm racking my brain to remember the consensus piece from the last meeting because I'm I'm not seeing any reason why we couldn't approve this as staff recommended. So perhaps someone else with memory is better than mine.
Yeah, I couldn't weigh in on that one. The this one was compared to the law office on the corner of Main Street and Becker Street, where they had the similar kind of commercial steel and glass doors and they were replaced with a a whole new wood facade, wood window, wood door. But it really transformed that space. We can also look at examples at the Town Hall and the Visitor Center where we took those commercial steel doors and replaced them with something sympathetic to the property. In the past, with the CIP, the precedent that was set was that the if we were going to give town money to subsidize improvements, it had to be improvements. It couldn't just be replacing like for like or fixing something that was broken. Uh, so for this situation, because the door is representing a like for like replacement consensus was that it wouldn't, you know, it wouldn't be justified to give town money to it because it's a it's a standard maintenance issue. Um, I feel very strongly about it. The the Rita Hotel and the Post Office are two other prominent examples where the you know, the door sympathetic to the building have been replaced and it really transforms the the facade of the building when that's done. So um, I'd like to see that precedent stay. Council Brennan?
Yeah, I have Alzheimer's, like, Council Miller, right? Because I don't remember us talking about this. I really don't. What? Yeah, I don't remember talking about this.
Uh, Council McKinnon.
I remember I remember the windows on the other one, but not this one.
Uh, my recollection, Mr. Chair, was that we were asked staff to go back and see if the proponents were open to changing it. And that that was my recollection. It wasn't that we weren't supportive. We weighed in on that. I remember the discussion and I could be wrong, of course, but we asked staff to go back and see if they would the proponent would come back with a different option. Because otherwise, it's the same as what we what we received.
Yeah, so I guess then I can reframe it. We've got I think we had really good reasons for sending it back to the proponent and trying to get a better design. Uh, it's come back with no changes and the the door has already been ordered. I think the fact that the door has already been ordered shows that the CIP isn't critical for this development to move forward or this improvement to move forward. And it's not meeting, it's not checking the boxes of the downtown design guidelines and the the best practices with heritage buildings. So uh, I will not be supporting that funding for for the two Russell Street East application tonight and looking for what kind of consensus we have with council. And I'm gonna go.
Yeah, I guess the and I and I don't disagree, sir, uh, Mr. Chair, but the one question I have, we'll go back to the score provided by CIP Committee. It indicates a ranking of thirty out of thirty for the evaluation. So I guess that just wondering, I guess, in your comments, Chair, and and being part of the committee, it um, it doesn't meet downtown guidelines, doesn't result in a change. Uh, it's replacement like for like, but it still scored thirty thirty. I just wondered if either senior planner Granky or or Mr. Chair can help provide some insight here, please?
Yeah, thanks, my friend. So I was gonna have, I had some comments on the rubric and the and the analysis, but senior planner Granky, did you want to weigh in there?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'm just Yes, Mr. Chair, I'm just I'm I'm looking at there the staff working group had a they had a grid, and we had an evaluation grid that that looked at a number of applicable and not applicable items and and typically with respect to a replacement with a like-for-like, provided that it was it was fairly fairly compatible and sympathetic that the the way the evaluation matrix was was outlined did not would have resulted in a would have resulted in a in a high score, and there were additional accessibility improvements through the through the railing that were also proposed. So that was that was the the rationale behind behind the score that was the score that was was recommended by the Evaluation Working Group.
Thanks, Carl. See, the the issue I've got with this is that in the downtown core design guidelines that has been attached with the with the report tonight, I'm not sure which was included, which wasn't included, but when we look at facade material, the proposal includes facade material consisting of brickwork, wood, masonry, et cetera, ornamental elements and architectural features have emphasis on natural color palette. That's out of five. Lighting, I'm assuming, is excluded from this analysis, but windows and doorways. Windows and doorways are sized appropriately for their designated space on the building's facade. Replacement doors are sympathetic to the architecture of the building. I don't understand how it can get full marks when when that's clearly not addressed here. It's similar for ornamental elements and architectural features. And then signage and landscaping, I don't think, would be relevant to this application specifically, but this is where I really miss having the robust discussions we used to have in a public forum on camera, on YouTube, where we got to discuss these things, because that CIP Committee brought a lot of value. There was members of the Heritage Committee on it, and and I think it it might have been a little slower on the turnaround, but it 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 did get results, and I just I don't see that in this you know, for thirty out of thirty for this, it's setting a huge precedent that in since twenty fifteen, when we first started the CIP, we've never made, so I want to hear a really good reason why we we cross this bridge tonight. Admiral Panko.
Yeah, so Senior Planner Granky, if you could just, so I mean, haven't haven't been there many times. I guess the doorway is somewhat operably. One door opens and one opens out. Is this change designed to improve accessibility? Or is it simply a matter of changing the inside of the door, or what does that just change mean?
Mr. Chair, I through you, Mr. Chair, I'm I'm searching the the application for for information on for information on the application intent, so bear with me for for a moment, please. The the proposed work is described in the application as replacing the front door and the vestibule of the restaurant. This will allow elderly patrons easy entry, getting a railway for older patrons to have easier access in. That was that was the 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 description and the rationale provided in the application.
Thanks, Senior Planner Granky. I think when I look at the AODA requirements for buildings, I don't see a railing. You know, it's we're not putting an automatic opener on the door. We're not putting a ramp in place. I just, to me, it doesn't cross the threshold of of justifying the accessibility benefits as a for the amount of money that's being requested from the town, so to me, it comes down to the design of the door and and we've every other application that's come through has had to meet a certain standard, and this application tonight doesn't meet that standard, so I would say don't fund it. Counselor Brennan?
I support it. I mean, the CIP Working Committee evaluated at thirty out of thirty. I understand you don't agree with that. The the owner of the building is putting in an equal amount of money to invest in it. And I believe it's going to improve accessibility, although there's no ramp. I think it's a good investment, and it fits under CIP, so I support it.
Good. Thanks, Counselor Brennan. Counselor Robinson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Like, I'm just I I'm just reading the reason for for the decision here, and it it does not affect the design of the building facade, and it provides additional safety element to the entrance. So I see no reason why we shouldn't be supporting staff's recommendation.
Thanks, Counselor Robinson. I think when we look at the history of the CIP and the the CIP Report, providing safety has never been a like, these are mandatory upgrades that need to happen because it creates a liability for the property owner. And the whole point of the CIP was taking those minimum investments that needed to be made and upgrading them to create a better downtown experience, a better pedestrian experience, and and a better level of investment happening in our cherished downtown, so this door represents the bare minimum that needs to be done to keep that entranceway safe. The current door is broken. It's not to code the way they open in and out in opposite directions. What's being proposed tonight is what needs to be done bare minimum. Why do we justify spending taxpayer money on doing the bare minimum? I I never saw anything about the bare minimum in the CIP Report. It was all about elevating it and getting a better quality product out of our out of our downtown core, so that I feel very strongly about it. I think I think we need to take a look at the at the guidelines again, because to me, there's no way when it's got a section on windows and doors, and it says the replacement doors are sympathetic to the architecture of the building, five points, how this could score thirty out of thirty. And when I think of the fairness, yeah, Counselor McKenna?
Yeah, I agree with you, Mr. Chair, and and I will, based on that, those design guidelines, it it doesn't it doesn't come out as sympathetic to the design, and it really doesn't add a lot of accessibility, which, as you pointed out, will be required anyway, so I I I agree with you and won't be supporting this tonight.
Thanks, Admiral Panko.
Yeah, I think I I would, I mean, I know this is something that I would prefer accessibility improvements be incorporated within this change and I think it's a situation, and again, having been there multiple times, those doors are big and heavy, and I think for anyone who is has any mobility challenges, anybody elderly, it could be, it is a challenge today. But I would rather spend even with a few thousand dollars more getting accessibility improvements incorporated into the change than simply, or you just replace the door. It's there right now, so I won't I won't support the application on stands, but would suggest staff go back and see if the owner is willing to make accessibility improvements and work within their CIP for those elements.
Thanks, Admiral Panko. Counselor Quinn, did you have your hand up there?
Yes. I I did want to chime in on this. I I do agree that we have a standard that we're looking to keep, and so why can't we just go back to this component and say, you know what, this isn't quite what we're looking for? Can we work on something? Can we get it to be what we do need in the downtown? And definitely, we those doors are terrible. I don't consider myself really having a whole lot of accessibility issues, but those doors are awful. They really are. So it needs to be something definitely done there, and there needs to be railings for people. Railings are are so easy and certainly make people's mobility much easier, so let's, can we go, can we do that? Can we go back to the component and the applicant and say, you know, this isn't quite what we're looking for? Let's see if we can't get a better design here.
So my understanding is that Senior Planner Granky's gone back, but the proponents replied that they've already ordered the door and they're going ahead with it, whether they're getting the funding or not. So now tonight, I I like Admiral Panko's idea of encouraging them to apply in the fall intake to add the accessibility features, but it sounds like on the door, we're we're out of luck at this point. Counselor Brennan?
Yeah, I respect council's decision on that. I'm just wondering if we have a grading system, and you score thirty out of thirty, and it comes here and and we say no. So maybe our grading system should change. I you're on the committee, so I usually follow what the committee that works on this stuff recommends, and they score thirty out of thirty, so maybe there's something wrong with your grading system.
Who who's on the committee, Counselor Brennan?
I understand. Were you, are you on the committee?
No, this council removed, this council removed the CIP Committee and downed the staff.
Okay, so we have a we have a grading system, and then we're not following it. But that's fine. I mean, we should go back to them, and and then we should have a look at how it's graded.
Okay, so is there, I've seen consensus then to go ahead with the Becker Street, not go ahead with the Russell Street, and we'll encourage the Russell Street to apply for accessibility improvements in the fall intake. Great, nodding heads. Okay, thank you, everybody. Thank you, Senior Planner Granky. Moving to eight point two is lifting apart lot control for Bellamy Farms.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. All this this report is, it seeks council's direction to to pass a bylaw lifting part lot control for a total of of ten ten blocks within the Bellamy Farm subdivision, so as council has seen a couple of part lot control applications come through in in the past, and it's largely an administrative step at the very end of the the subdivision process to simply finalize the division of the subdivision blocks into individual into individual lots for each of those, for the sales of each of those individual lots to be conveyed to to the future property owners. So through the subdivision approval process, council has council approved blocks within the within the plan, and rather than dividing the blocks into the individual lots at the beginning, typically what what happens in a case like this is the is through is the the foundations, the building permits are issued, the foundations are in the ground, at which point then the surveyor knows exactly where those lots are going to be. So with precision, the surveyor can then draw the draw where the exact lot lines are. So the so the same number of lots are are approved as is as was originally conceptualized through the subdivision process, but that can, this is is this is a legal mechanism that that allows this division without going through going through a consent process. So through a part lot control application, staff review for for zoning and and as well as is ensuring the the appropriate easements and and conveyances are identified in in the survey, and at this point, those 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 check out, so the recommendation of staff is that we is that is that council passes a bylaw lifting the part lot control provisions of the Planning Act to allow the conveyance of these ten blocks into into a total of, I believe, thirty-five individual lots to allow for their their final sale. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Senior Planner Granky. Big milestone. We got Counselor McKenna with a question comment.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm supportive of the recommendation from staff. I just wanted some clarity on Appendix A. He highlighted blocks, say, blocks twenty-two to twenty-eight. The staff report is saying blocks twenty-three to twenty-eight, so I just is I just wanted to confirm if block twenty-two is in or not in. It's highlighted, but it's not referenced anywhere, so it might be just one too many blocks got highlighted. It's Appendix A.
So there's lots of blocks. I'm just I'm I'm just checking to be sure, Mr. Mr. Chair.
As I said, I'm very supportive of the staff recommendation.
I I do believe there was a just a typo in there. It should read twenty-three. I don't see twenty-four in in Appendix H, so it's the recommendation at the at the beginning is is correct. It's blocks twenty-three to to twenty-eight. Appendix A doesn't have a block twenty-four, so it's just a numbering a numbering item in in the mapping there. My apologies, Mr. Chair.
Excellent.
Good, and I'm seeing thumbs up from everybody. So I think we're good to go. Thank you very much, Senior Planner Granky. Next is eight point three, cash and blue parking levy policy with Planner Richard Grant.
Can you guys hear me?
Richard, we can hear you, but your camera's not on.
Yeah, I'm trying to start the video, but it's not starting. I'm waiting.
If you check at the bottom, there should be, it looks like a movie camera. If you click on that.
Yes. I know. It says start video. It's not starting.
Is your camera, maybe just check your cameras on and not closed off?
Yeah, it's on. I can see the light. I just don't know. It's not working for me. One second.
I empathize. I've been having camera issues for the last few months.
We don't need to see Richard. Mr. Chair, we don't need to see Richard as much as I'd like to.
Could you cut that?
Pardon me?
Did you?
Oh, there it is. Oh, success.
Nice. Welcome.
All right. Thank you. A cash and low parking policy is designed to accommodate parking shortages by allowing a landowner or developer the ability to enter in agreement with the town paying a parking levy, a fee per parking stall for each parking stall deficit. This would replace the parking spaces required by zoning for any redevelopment or redevelopment in the downtown. Currently, our parking levy of seven fifty is only applicable for non- residential developments. In twenty twenty, Jaleh Richards prepared a comprehensive downtown court parking study, which assessed operations management and regulatory framework for parking downtown, and offered recommendations to improve the town's parking infrastructure. One recommendation was to update the town's sealed parking levy suggesting that the funds raised be used to purchase a new parking lot or upgrade existing parking infrastructure. With a decision to remove the existing parking meters made by the previous council that effectively left the town with one option, to purchase a new parking lot. This report seeks for a specific seeks direction and for a specific standpoint of this report. Firstly, staff is proposing that the parking levy of seven fifty be increased to seventeen fifty. The updated parking levy reflects the current cost of constructing a service-level parking lot as well as parking infrastructure costs. Secondly, the added cost recovery rate of fifty percent reflects the town's desire to share the cost of development in the downtown with landowners and developments. Staff is also seeking direction on the funding calculation methodology to use, either the flat rate or the mathematical formula. The calculation method variables include the parking lot land value, the estimated parking stall construction cost, and the number of stalls per parking lot. To keep the formula current, the Building Construction Price Index should be applied on a periodic basis. The Building Construction Price Index functions the same way the Consumer Price Index does just for construction-related product projects. Self proposes a flat rate because it is easier to administer. The mathematical formula operates in a similar fashion as a flat rate. It is easier to demonstrate the land to the landowner or the developer where the costs are being applied using the mathematical formula. However, the calculation is not as straightforward. It may cause confusion during implementation. In Atlantic County, only Mississippi Mills and Carston Place have a parking levy using flat rate method. In Mississippi Mills, it is three thousand per stall, and Carston Place is thirty-five hundred. Thirdly, staff is seeking direction on the consideration criteria for the recommended cash flow parking policy that would accompany the updated parking levy. That would accompany the updated parking levy. Cash flow parking policy ideally would be used to form the framework for addressing the parking deficiency in the downtown. A cash flow parking policy at minimum would acknowledge that. In the parking program is not an automatic right of the proponents as requires discretionary approval from the town. It would only be permissible if the creation of onset parking is physically impossible and practical. There should not be a negative impact on the the livability of adjacent residential because of the cash flow parking. I E. It's following good planning principles such as promoting compact design of urban spaces. It would only be acceptable for non-residential developments or a non-residential. Points of Mississippi in the downtown. There may be an opportunity to include residential developments in the cash flow parking policy. However, future research is needed to establish our parking capacity for residential units. It would recognize that planning supports revitalization and or intensification of the downtown. The parking levy should reflect the portion or all the municipal costs providing public infrastructure with the proposed rate. With the proposed recovery rate, it would reflect fifty percent of the cost. And lastly, it would acknowledge that the funds arrived in the parking levy. Would be used for the creation of infrastructure, parking infrastructure and the parking lot. Last thing that I'm seeking direction on where the staff is. Is to repressing of the reserve fund to be used for rider transportation needs, providing other forms of transportation like scooters. The hope is that the monies in the reserve fund could be used to address the parking efficiency in the downtown by providing alternative forms of transportation. Currently, the reserve fund is dedicated to which purchasing a new municipal parking lot. As of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, reserve fund holds nine thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars for roughly ten thousand dollars. The reallocation of the reserve fund may require additional consideration. That concludes my presentation, Mister Chair.
Uh, great. Thank you. Questions, comments on the report. Uh, Council McKenna?
Uh, thank you, Mister Chair. Thank you, Richard. That was a very well written report, and I found it uh. Very interesting, well researched, and it provided me with lots of questions. One, I do support. Uh, I want to see. I would support maximum flexibility in reserve fund. So designing the reserve fund by law that give us as many options as possible. The end, if you use that money and 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 it's wide as hope has. I just like to allow this, but I thought. And uh. I'm also wondering if we create a new municipal parking lot with the levy, with the funds from the levy. So the developers uh have helped pay maybe fifty percent of that. That law though is open to the public. Uh, or anyone who wants to use it and not specifically. The developers who paid for half of it, let's say. Is that correct?
Through Mister Chair, yes, that's correct. Um, the parking lot would be open to anyone in downtown. It would be basically another source of parking. Just owned by the town.
And if I may, Mister Chair, I have one more. I'm thinking about our land needs study, um. Pointing out the uh surplus of commercial space that we have. And then I link that to our housing crisis and knowing that um. In the recent past, we have. Support from conversion of these tons of space to house. So if and and already many of those. Second and third floor revenues that we have on, let's say, back with. Don't. Parking for everyone to concern, grand. Then we. Design a. Process that will favor residential. Development in value, this place. And also look at. Being more favorable to that around the parking. So if we. If I was converting uh unused commercial space to residential, can we lighten the parking? Law laws or are we tying ourselves with this bylaw? Uh, changes that it would hamper the development or housing because of some parking issue. Hope I'm. I'm missing the land needs study, the parking and the need for housing and making sure that they complement. They one doesn't. Tie the hands of another when we're trying to work with. And that's what I'm uh.
So through Mister Chair, so if I understand correctly, you're wondering if we can reduce the requirements for parking for residential units?
If we're converting out of commercial space, if they don't have it, can can we? Do we have that flexibility? I I don't want to do that, but if that's. That's what's standing between affordable housing. Unused commercial space and the parking rules that are getting in the way. I just want to make sure we got. Flexibility there.
Through Mister Chair, I'm actually not sure. I mean, that's an interesting um question, honestly. Um. To have developers create more affordable used housing from commercial lands. And to not have the required requirements met. There would be deficit, of course, so I don't exactly know how we could alleviate that just yet. There has to be some sort of alternative there. So like, it's still possible, but I think we have to figure out where the alternative would come from.
And it's a rhetorical, you know, it's not rhetorical. It's a hypothetical question.
Senior Planner Greinke, I see your hand up.
Yes, uh, through you, Mister Chair. Uh, the question of residential parking is is one that has been wrestled with. At fairly significant length among planning staff in the preparation of of this report and just how do we uh? How do we address that? And that's that's a challenge that we've seen right from right from the very beginning. The reason that cash and lieu of parking is is offered as an additional flexibility tool for commercial parking in in our experience is that uh. There's a lot more turnover. Commercial parking on the street to. Is is typically it. It comes and goes. There isn't the the overnight or or the winter element that's as concerning with with residential parking for for residential parking that's uh. If if we offer a space, typically it would need to be a space that can be occupied at at any given. At any given time, so that that's. So I think we've and and Mister Grand has has outlined that uh that we certainly need to dig into residential a little bit more, perhaps as as a follow-up uh. As a follow-up piece, but I but I think in the meantime, we still do have that that planning tool available if if. A residential development is proposed where uh where there's a deficiency in parking, somebody can still apply for a minor variance or or a site-specific zoning amendment to reduce parking and and council can. Consider it on on a case-by-case basis as we have in the past. If if a residential development is very close to amenities that can be walked to, it's it's a lot easier to support it there than than somewhere. Somewhere else in in town, but uh I think. That is uh it it and that that ability exists through through cash and loo as as well, but I think this gives uh the cash and loo of parking option gives an additional flexibility. An additional tool above and beyond the minor variance in zoning that that we're comfortable with for for commercial with, I think, with the understanding that that residential does have a. A closer look through uh. This report implements the one of the recommendations from J L Richards parking study from from a couple of years ago, but they uh that that same parking study highlighted that residential parking hasn't really been addressed, and I think is. Is a subject that we would have to have a look at uh at another day and and perhaps. As as something to look at beyond the downtown core or elsewhere in town if a particular need is has been identified.
Thank you. Uh, and I'll I have another question, but I'll wait to for that. Thank you.
Thanks, Council McKenna. I just want to make sure for the rest of the debate, this is only applying to commercial. Is that correct? So no residential. Okay, great. Thank you. Uh, Mayor Panko.
Yeah, just for clarity, uh, I assume this applies only to commercial development within the downtown core. Uh, is it uh? In any way potentially apply beyond the downtown core? In other words, if someone did a. Highway commercial development uh. Along Lombard and and thought they would take advantage of the parking next door and rather pay cash for parking instead of doing the on-parking could apply there as well.
Are you, Richard?
Through you, Mister Chair. It's possible that you could apply the cash and parking to other areas like commercial areas like, say, Lombard. But the reason why the cash and parking is normally relegated to specific areas is because there's a parking efficiency. So if it comes up that there is a parking efficiency in, let's say, the commercial areas, and we could explore other avenues for providing additional parking. But at this point, we don't know where the parking efficiencies really are lying. We know that there isn't a downtown core, but how much is it in the Lombard area, right?
Right, like you're. Yeah, I'll support the staff recommendation. Well done, Richard. Thank you. So any other questions, comments? Uh, Council Quinn.
Thank you. Um, I will support uh. Staff's recommendation. But I would really like to see where this money is going, where it's being spent. Because in a business downtown, I know we have issues with parking. And I do know where my business is, that we definitely have issues with residential parking in that particular area or lack of. Residential parking in that particular area. So. I would just like to see where the money is going to be spent. I'd like to see studies being done to find other parking areas for people. And you know what? Sometimes it's just tucked in behind a building that we don't even realize. So I think we need to open our eyes and have a good look and see what we can come up with. Not going to happen today, but let's build it for the future. Thank you.
Thanks, uh, Council Brennan.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks. I certainly support this. Um. I guess my question is, I'm just looking for the phrase that you have in here about the um. The reserve fund and examining uh other alternative. Transportation needs or something like that. Um, I'd like to sort of be a bit more specific with that. Um. I I you think you mentioned something about scooters and that type of thing, so um certainly uh. You know, you you've recognized the deficiency downtown and that we have to address it, and I think this is a way to do it. But I'd be interested to know and hear from council. Uh, you know, the use of the reserve specifically.
Did is that something? Uh, we want to get into tonight or discuss in the future?
No, we don't have to get into it tonight.
No, I think that's good. It definitely, if we want to broaden up, we can use it. Like the building permit reserve comes to mind, but specific enough that it's going to be channeled. Um, I I'm I'm wondering with this, uh, yeah, Richard?
Oh, sorry. Um, sorry, Mister Chair. I just wanted to say that the policy would address these concerns in terms of where the reserve fund could be used.
Great. Uh, my question on it is in regards to the patios. Could this apply to my patio that might take up a parking spot in the downtown core? For the summer months.
Mister Chair, can it be a little more specific?
Uh, yeah, sorry, like a street patio that would take up a parking spot um on on the street. Would they be required to pay a cash and loo under the proposed policy? To make up for that lot spot, or is that is this only looking at new development as it comes through the planning department?
Mister Chair, I think so far this is looking at new development, and I think for the patio, it's a temporary situation. Um, the cash and the parking is a long-term thing.
Excellent. Okay, no, I to that makes some sense to me. One thing I I wonder um. You know, with the fifty percent, I get that we're trying to be uh kind of phase it in, but when our neighbors are doing the hundred percent. I just wouldn't want the cost benefit analysis of a developer to lean. Uh, towards paying out the cash and loo instead of adding underground parking or off-street parking. Uh, because the fees too low, so um. So so that's my my one caution with this. I really like the idea of uh of including alternative transportation. Um. And it's it's great to see this uh. Let's come to the committee after kind of the follow-up from the previous. And thank you very much. Any other questions?
There's been a couple of references or implications that there's a. A deficiency, and if I remember the parking study, there. It's not necessarily a deficiency in our parking. We, I think, uh, I may be wrong, but I think that we didn't. What deficiency over talking about is that there's a new develop. On that site, we're efficient parking. Then there's a deficiency specific to that project. But overall, we don't have. There's hot spots. At certain times of day, days of the week, but it's challenging, but.
We're losing your sound, Council McKenna?
Overall, I don't think, uh, if I recall, that we did have a parking specific deficiency. It was uh. This is specific to a project that didn't have the land or the park. But so we're not doing this because we have a parking.
That's a great, great point. Uh, Senior Planner Greinke, I see you're back there. Did you?
Oh, sorry, Mister Chair. Yes, I I was uh I was agreeing with the with Counselor McKenna. This is uh. This is provided as a as a tool if a development or redevelopment cannot provide the uh. The required on. On-site uh onsite parking spaces that this is an ability that they can provide, and and certainly Counselor Quinn's comment is. Is is right on, and and one of the things that we're looking to address through the policy currently, we have a reserve. There's no clear direction on what that reserve should be used for other than parking as as a whole, and and I think through this, we're. We're attempting to establish sort of a strategic approach for uh for managing that, because that is a question that 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 does come up from uh from time to time. If if somebody's. Being asked to pay into this reserve, what do they what do they get out of it? They may not get a parking space that they can use and as reserve for them, but at least uh. There there's a pathway to it to developing parking infrastructure that uh that that more broadly serves serves the community and and everyone, so that's certainly a a very fair uh fair comment.
Thanks, uh, Colonel. Uh, Council Quinn.
Thank you. And um, I I have to disagree. I do believe there is a a parking. Problem in downtown. I know uh with my own business, I have lost a few clients because they can't get. Parked close. They can't get onto Russell Street to to where I am. Um, and and my clients, some of these people are a little older and they can't walk whole long distance. And that's when I'm saying, let's take a look at where we could possibly get some extra parking. I know even where I am, um. We have figured out some parking in in the property at Davidson Courtyard, so we have. Uh, worked that out, so I think we need to just open up our minds and have a. Uh, good look at where we could put some more parking, and you know, the one spot that jumped right into my mind. Is the ground field right next to Tim Hortons on that street. Sits there empty. That could be a lovely parking spot. That could be great. So I think that's what I'm trying to say is. Let's let's open our eyes. Let's take a look at places that could create more parking for us. In the future, but let's uh let's see where this money is going to go. Thank you.
So I'm seeing a broad uh agreement with the staff recommendation. Um, is there any? Do you have clear direction from us, Richard?
Right, we, Mister Chair?
Uh, do you need any more direction from us, or we're good to go? The with the recommendations proposed?
I think that the recommendation is so price efficient. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Uh, so with that, we'll move on to eight point four, which was a recommendation or a spin-off from the delegation from Counselor McKenna. To review the uh, I believe it'd be a policy that would look at um allocating. Uh, tax money to um. Not for profit groups outside of the town of Snapples. Would that be broad enough to? Counselor McKenna?
No, what I was thinking was just specifically around the hospital funding, the regional. And local hospitals. It just. We either we'll come up with a decision. We just want to do local or. Or there's something else. I just want it reviewed, and we're just doing it based on our. Good heart and our goodwill. There's nothing guiding us. I mean, it's the right thing to do, but. Yeah, we could change our minds next year.
Great. So do we have consensus to send that to staff to come back to us with the report? Great seeing out of heads. So we'll move on to eight point five is an acquisition disposition of land with Senior Planner Greinke.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Uh, and thank you, Committee. The uh. Just to to update the committee, the town has received a uh a request to to purchase, to close and convey. The uh the portion of the unopened municipal road allowance identified as the eastern end of of Lewis Street. That is a uh. A road allowance stub intersecting on on Pearl Street, so uh. The recommendation. To move as the next step is that uh that council directs uh. That we undertake the notification uh. The notification and 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 give notice of the proposal to uh close the road and to proceed in accordance with the with the town's land sale bylaw. Thank you.
Uh great, thanks, Carl. Um I'm wondering, would there be any advantage of including uh the second road allowance in this process to save administrative effort? Senior Planner Greinke?
And in in that case, uh with respect to the second road allowance, uh. Certainly, we'd, I I would look for council's direction on on how to proceed on on that. We don't have an offer from that. So uh perhaps council can, council as an option, council may direct us to undertake an RFP or or some other. Or some other mechanism with respect to what the second road allowance.
Thanks, Carl. Mayor Pico?
Yeah, I suggest we simply stop up and close and and declare surplus that parcel as well. And then have that come back for for the discussion as for what we do with it.
Great, I'm seeing now to heads and would, could we include, do we need to include getting an appraisal on that? That lot at the same time, or is that something staff, is that operational?
I would suggest we incorporate that into the direction of staff tonight.
You're great. So uh Senior Planner Greinke, if that's good with on your end, we'll get the two lots and an appraisal. And I'm seeing now to heads to move that forward tonight.
Yes.
Excellent, thank you, Carl. You had a big night at Marathon Reports. So thank you for everything you put into it for us. Um with no other questions, comments, or agenda items, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. I move back, Counselor Brennan, second by Counselor Robinson, that the committee adjourns proceedings at seven twelve P M and stands so adjourned until the next duly called committee meeting. All those in favor? That is carried. Have a good night. Yeah, four P M at the Town Hall next week. Come visit us.
Good night, everyone.